It is 5:31, so if we can get started, please. Stephanie, could you do the roll call, please?
Tom Moore. Judy O'Connor. Joe Omo Osagie. Elaine Palencia. Kyle Patterson. Julian Rappaport. Jane Sprandl. Susan Fowler. Margaret White.
Here. Okay, and is there any public participation or citizen input? Okay, I need approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion? Susan? Judy, second. All in favor? And my president's comments tonight are, thank you to all of the agencies. We can see how hard you're working and really appreciate it. And also, thank you to this board for evaluating, spending the time to review all of your hard work. So, we have another marathon going here. And so, we'll go ahead and start with our review summaries. And we're gonna start with Champaign County Head Start, the early Head Start, MHB. And the program is Early Childhood Mental Health Services. And it's white, Palencia, so I will start. And the priority is system of care. And actually, overarching priorities are actually all that we have listed. And they serve low-income families with young children who have identified as needing early childhood mental health services. And they also serve not only the children, but they assist parents and Head Start teachers with plans and skills to promote social-emotional development and address challenging behaviors. And they monitor the progress in the areas. The grant is actually was originally, this year was 135,179. And they're asking for an increase of 217.6%. And for 286,225. The evidence does show that teaching children's social-emotional skills improves students' attitudes and behaviors. And we see that in not only improving the behaviors, but academic gains in self-regulation skills and helping prepare kids for kindergarten. And also, it reduces the number of children in the criminal justice system, long-term. And one of the key things of this is the parent component. So Elaine, I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah. I didn't have much else to add. I did wonder, and it might be, I couldn't find it, just what percentage of the Head Start children are referred into this program? I think that would be interesting to know and to track over time. Just to, might give a window into, you know, the society in general, how children are doing, how that would go up and down. And, you know, it's just such a, it's a well-known, it's like a brand, Head Start. And so, I think that helps a lot with referrals. And I thought it was, and they have, they want us to fund four social skills and prevention coaches. They have three, and they want to hire another one. And said in the application, this would reduce the time from assessment to engagement by two weeks. And that is always a concern of mine when we look at these, how long it, all of the applications, how long it takes to get services. So, I think that's, you know, a good thing. And also, they're raising the salaries. And that's one reason for the increase. And we know, everybody, when we look at these, know that these wonderful social work and teaching positions across, across the field are often underpaid. So, I liked that.
I wanted to add one more comment, too, that I need to say. And they do include rural Champaign County by having a Rand Tool site. Susan?
I know that this has been a successful program and that we've been positive about it. But I am concerned about the increase from 98,000, or 90,000 to 286,000. I know that the budget requests across agencies, when combined, exceed what we have available to allocate. And so, my question would be, has Head Start, or the Regional Planning Commission, explored leveraging funds or finding a partner who could also support or assist with this critical initiative? Because if children aren't provided with the support during the preschool years, they're going to enter kindergarten and first grade with quite a bit of difficulties and challenging behaviors. So, catching it early is always important. But is there a way for other interested parties in the community to provide support? Thank you, Chandra.
Any other comments? It's our wake-up call for the crowd, too. Okay, thank you, Susan. The next, oh, yes, Julian.
I guess, maybe I misunderstood this. Do they have no other support? Head Start, this is it? We're it? They have other support, though.
They have other support, but this is just for the social-emotional component.
So, okay. I guess I was a little confused since often we're looking at, I don't see the figures for how much they have and who supports them. Because many of the other proposals, we're getting information about how, how much total money they have and how much this is as a portion of all of that. So, I didn't know how to evaluate this in terms of finance.
I do have a copy of the original one, and I can look at that and give you that information at the end here.
Okay. I just, I think we might wanna just talk about that when we get to, at some point.
I think what you're referring to with the other proposals that list other funding is if there's different funders for that specific program. But for this one, where the, we fund the entire program.
No, actually, on quite a few of the proposals, we know about the total support that the setting has. Okay.
Okay, I can.
At what time are we going to, I mean, I guess what I wanna know is, are we gonna discuss finances and budget at some point?
Yes.
I know we have to get through a lot of stuff here, but we're gonna come back next time. And I didn't wanna just leave it completely up to the staff to figure out. I think we oughta have a discussion.
So, I do have that information, too. Susan?
Okay, let it go for now, if you want.
Just to repeat, Head Start has federal funds. This is a separate program funded by the Mental Health Board. But Head Start has supported and required programs to address the social-emotional needs of children. So, I'm not at all opposed to our providing some support. But I am questioning the increase in support and why there aren't other sources of funding. Just to clarify my question.
Okay, and we will, we are asking these questions and then giving them to the agency for clarification. Thank you. Okay, the next one is the Champaign-Urbana Area Project. The program is TRUCE. And Judy?
Their total current funding is $50,000, and they're asking for $75,244, which is a 50%, increase. They have working agreements with the Champaign Public Health, Champaign Schools, Dream Girls, and CU Trauma Resiliency. They work with young adults, 15 to 26. They are TRUCE peace seekers. And what their role is, that they say they are uniquely trained to stop the shootings on the front end. Their work involves interrupting the spread of gun violence, reducing the risk of those at high risk of committing gun violence, and changing community norms. They speak of having community peace circles. And they're to be held near the hotspots. And they have, they are looking at a pilot, to pilot a communitive restorative neighborhood board. They collaborate with Fresh Starts. They say they are wherever they're needed, homes, hospitals. They serve a minority population, low-income and underserved communities. They target Garden Hills Neighborhood Association, North End, Douglas Park, Beardsley Park, and Silver Water. Data is provided by the Champaign Police Department, community members, social media, and their existing social network. Peace seekers and volunteers are recruited from the communities they serve. What they're looking at with their program is, uh, let's see, what do I wanna say? The, I'm gonna skip that part. They say follow-up is three to 12 months, referral service is one year plus. Their impact regarding gun violence, understanding trauma, positive activities in the community, restorative justice, number of youth in JDC, parent engagement. Non-treatment plans were 16. And they say due to the nature of their work, they may offer more than what they can put on, share with us. Last year, their non-treatment clients were three. Their service contract were 12. And their community service events were 88. The personnel cost is $45,236. And that's the primary expense charged to us. Other fees are professional consultants, $6,600. Occupancy, $4,788. Conference says staff development, $35. Lease rental, $10,320. So, I think that there are some things that need to be, questions that need to be asked about outcomes. Sorry, Joe.
So, the idea of, of the peace seekers is, it's not just a novel idea, but it's an idea that we all need to, to keep in mind. Going back to the last proposal with Head Start, I would say part of it is, I like to see the connection between someone like Head Start and TRUCE seekers. Because when it comes down to it, if the parents of his children in Head Start are involved in the community, it all makes a connection. And the TRUCE, peace seekers create an, a peaceable community, creates, would help create that environment in which they can stop the shootings on the front end, not on the back end. Because a lot of times, we're always trying to put a Band-Aid on something that's already occurred. But I, I think it's a good program, and we ought to fund it.
And I just wanna say, there's no involvement in the rural community.
I have a couple of comments. One is, in the expenses, occupancy and the lease rental, what's the? It's $4,788 for occupancy, and then $10,320 for lease. And the other question I have is, do we have the out, we know what the project, do we have the outcomes? We have the definition of, you know, how many people were seen, but do we have outcomes on effectiveness?
I don't see we have definite numbers and outcomes. But I think when we see within the larger community, if there are less shootings, that would be part of our outcome.
Susan?
I'm gonna submit my questions and not go through all of them. But this was a program that I was very excited about when it was first submitted four years ago. I think this is the fourth year. It's been funded for three years. And one of our hopes was that they would be able to leverage funds with other agencies and not depend entirely on Mental Health Board funds. And that hasn't happened yet. It may take more time. But it is one of my questions, what efforts have been made to collaborate with other agencies that could perhaps provide additional support. I also have, as I said, eight questions, which I will give to Margaret and to staff. Several of the questions address, out of 120 shootings, there were eight interrupters, peace seekers deployed. Now, what did they do, and how did this impact the communities? We clearly have a problem with more shooting occurring in our community. I'm not expecting this program to immediately decrease the shooting. But I do need to see what the outcomes are when people are deployed to the scenes of shootings, even if they're descriptive outcomes of, of the support provided to the families. I also was confused because at one point, they noted that they served 13, or 16 youth, and they had a total of 75 participants. So, clearly defining who the participants are. Were those the peace seekers, or were those the family members? I just had difficulty really understanding much of the activity of the TRUCE program. And again, we have issues in our community. But I'm also wondering where other collaborative agreements might be and where the criminal justice system supports might be for this.
Thank you. Oh, Tom?
I know that one of the difficulties that TRUCE faces is, this is a program that's supposed to enhance the community. And it can only be done by what they do with individuals. So consequently, you can, individuals can be removed from the community, or whatever happens to them. But what we don't know, and what is difficult for them, is determine how does the community react to that? And all of their response, all of their programs are not just directly at shooters. There's a lot of work that they do as support for families who have been, who have suffered from one of these incidents. And so, that also has to get thrown into the mix. Determining exactly what the outcome is becomes very difficult for this small program to do. It doesn't mean that they shouldn't think about it, but it just, it puts another stress on them where they can't do the work that they're supposed to be.
Because you're building circles around the individuals. If this is one individual, that individual who is involved in the shooting has a family, has a community, has a church, has a school. And this, what the TRUCE seekers, at least based on what my reading interprets, is that that's what they are doing. They're creating concentric circles around those individual situations.
Okay, thank you. And I think, oh.
Is it all right to keep talking about this?
Yeah.
Just an interesting coincidence. Yesterday, PBS showed a documentary called Charm City, which was about a, it's a quite similar program, but in a much larger setting, Baltimore. And if you wanna get a good feeling for what people do when they do this kind of work, take a look at this documentary. And it's called Charm City because it started being called Harm City, and they put a C in front of it, the Charm City. And it's available, you know, you could probably get it on, even though it was shown last night, I'm sure you can, you can get it. It's just, if you have an interest in seeing the nature of the work, that's a really good example in a much larger setting than this one. But nevertheless, I think the work is similar.
I appreciate the comments. And I think we still need to go back to Susan. Susan's comment is, we need some, more of a description that would be helpful. And also, other agencies funding. I think it's, Tom, you're right on, it's hard to, how do you, how do you evaluate something like this? It's very difficult.
That's all about Charm City is the, at least the murder rate in America's been going down for the longest period of time. And the only reason why it looks like it hasn't, it can't stabilize right now is the city of Baltimore and Chicago. You take those two out of the mix, it's, it's, the numbers are going down quite. So, when you talk about Baltimore having a problem, and we're doing something similar to Baltimore, this is, Baltimore is so much, it's bigger than what we are, so.
Thank you. The next agency, Courage Connection, and the program is Courage Connection. And Julian? And so, and I guess when we're talking about them, always remember, we need to focus, too, on our questions concerning the grants. Thanks.
So, okay, this'll serve maybe a little bit of what I was talking about before, just coincidentally. If you look at, we've given them $127,000. And that's, they don't want any more than that. They want the same amount. But if you look at the top page there, you'll see what portion that is of their total budget. So, you can see it's 10%. Thank you for the mathematics. I was never that good at that part. So, it's, anyway, I mean, all I'm doing is, it gives me a perspective of how much we're supporting into this and the fact that they have a lot of money from other places as well, which I feel pretty good about. So, you know, the Courage Connection program is, I think everybody knows pretty much, it's about domestic violence for both the people who are the direct recipients of it and their children. So, it's a, this is a, I think, a crucial program in our community. There's no doubt about that. They've been doing this for quite some time. And given that they're not really asking for any more than they've asked for before, it's pretty straightforward to take a look at what they've done. And, you know, I would say it has a great rationale. It all makes sense. If I have any, and I think the staff have some questions about how they're reporting their program statistics and so on. But, so if I have any questions about it, they have, I think that this, they've started working with our evaluation team. Is that correct? Yes, okay. So, I don't, I don't think it was mentioned in their, maybe it was, but I didn't see it. At any rate, if I had any question about it, it would be that sometimes I'd like to see what people say they intend to do actually happen the next time. So, they're saying they intend to have implemented a longitudinal post-service evaluation tool. Great. Let's try to remember, that's what they said they were gonna do. And let's have them do it. So, we can actually see something about, I mean, I just get, I don't really intend this to be a critical remark about this program so much as, it would be really helpful to know, like, what happens to the people after they get this service? Do we know anything at all about it? I, you know, I don't expect this to be a finely tuned research project, but just some information about the outcomes that follow. That's my basic sort of thought about this, so I'll, there was a second person, right? I'll turn it over to whoever that is.
Tom?
I am the second person who has very little to add to that. But I do, I was impressed with, and I think I got this right. They have a rural court advocate. And it looks to me like they do considerable work in the rural areas, which I'm really pleased about. But I think I like the notion of a rural, of a court advocate to work with these few, because it's often that what they need, while they may need some other kind of psychological service, they often need this kind of service, that is, someone with a legal background to kind of walk them through the issues that they're, they're facing. And without that, they, they don't stand much a chance of getting any relief from the situation that they're in. So, I like that they've added that, and I like that they're. You know what? I don't even have this to get up in the morning. Okay. You did it on purpose.
Any other comments, Julie?
There were a couple of things I should've said that I didn't say. One was, it's, I think they had some open positions. It would be nice to know whether they're filled or not. And also, we should realize that I believe this is serving as a local match for other funds that they get. So, it's all the, that gives us even more incentive to support it. Okay, that's it. I don't wanna.
Kyle?
Just, I guess, a quick comment. You notice with the residency breakdown, I mean, I don't know if I've seen one that's more like directly reflective of the population of the county. It really shows you the reach that this organization has. I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that they're the only people that really do what they do, and it's such an important role in the community. You know, people travel from all around for their services. And I think that it's a program that we should continue to support.
Okay. Julian, I looked up the numbers you were asking for on Head Start. Their total agency revenue is $8,481,451. And their request from us is $286,225. So, it would be 3% of their budget.
Yeah, so my, well, that, my question will be, why do they need a 200% increase to do this part of their program when they're doing, and they have, I thought they were gonna be a well-financed program. It's a popular, important, not an important, and I don't mean it as a critique. I just don't really understand why.
And that's not a critique. That's what we're supposed to be doing, Julian, so thank you.
I mean, I don't mean it as a critique of what they're doing.
Yeah.
More about how, how it's supported.
I think within Champaign County, because I have one of my former students working within, it has changed quite a bit. I mean, the clientele has. I mean, the clientele has changed, or the students or children have changed, and the families have changed. If you're going into rural Champaign County, more Spanish-speaking, if you're going even locally, many of the families are single-parent households, and many of the parents may not have high school educations and things like that. So it's changed lots of, also some refugee families are represented also. So it's, it's a, it's an evolving program, and I think that's why, I think that's why there's a higher need now.
Well, we can talk about it whenever, we can talk about it.
Okay. I just wanted to get back, or I'd forget those numbers. Okay, next, the agency is Crisis Nursery, and the program Beyond Blue, Champaign County. And Tom, please.
As Margaret said, this is from Crisis Nursery, and the program is called Beyond Blue. This is an incredible program. It grew out of, out of the work that Crisis Nursery does, and what they discovered was there was a lot of mothers that soon after their birth of the child suffer severe depression that they thought that it was important for them, since they're the ones who work with these mothers, to do something to help prevent that kind of problem. They're requesting $85,000 from us, they currently get about $75,000. Their total budget is around $212,000, and we fund about 40% of this, of this, this program. And Beyond Blue serves mothers who have, or are at risk for developing perinatal depression. They target about 35 mothers annually who demonstrate this perinatal depression and show risk factors. They, one thing they do is they go into the hospital soon after the birth and interview, or at least, and let mothers know what's, what's available for them. Beyond Blue reduces perinatal depression through a relationship-based, family-focused model of intervention and treatment. Services are provided in non-traditional settings, including clients' homes, neutral sites throughout Champaign County, home visits. That home visit is important because what they do, this program is mostly designed for rural, for the rural area, 51% of the people they serve from the rural. So the home visit is really important because it deals with the issues of transportation. They have screening for perinatal depression, they do, they have a parent-child interaction groups, support groups to address social isolation. And they also have what I think is pretty interesting, 48-hour planned respite care. I've never been a mother, but I, I know what it's like when you have a little kid and you would like to put him somewhere for a while, and you can't. They do a lot of referral services. Crisis Nurses have recommend, this is important too, Crisis Nursery has reconnected with the Community Services Center of Northern Champaign County in order to better identify underserved or underrepresented minority populations, specifically in Rantoul. Crisis Nursery hosts monthly tables during the time, they do vision screening with a local doctor, and food pantry services are also offered. Crisis Nursery hopes to reach those who might need otherwise, reach out for help, but providing a regular presence during their monthly visits. So in essence, they provide a lot of services for families. They, I see, they're, they're hoping to serve, they served 30, 32 people last year, and they're hoping to serve 33. And I noticed that they're all women, and I wonder if they might think about doing groups with fathers as well as with mothers, because in case they live with the mother, they need to understand how this problem works and what are the things that they can do to help reduce its impact on.
Jane? Any other comments?
I truly think he stole my notes, because everything that's highlighted, he said. As, as the Northern Champaign County rep, I've decided, I love the fact that they've noticed the great need for Rantoul area. You know, a note was even said, program does not seem to find difficulty reaching Champaign or Urbana residents, but rural residents. And so I think this is fantastic, how they're getting into, like, some of the apartments. You know, when they talk about the Special Ed Co-op, obviously that's also Head Start and things like that. And so they're really, they're where the moms are. And, and I totally love the idea of dads need to also know what they can do to help support this. And so I think that's great if they can add that component, and also.
Any other comments? Julian?
I'll say the thing that I said every year about this program, that it's, it's great. At one time, it was co-sponsored by the County Mental Health Board, when I was the president of the County Mental Health Board. We did it, the public health, did I say mental health? What, yeah, that one. Okay, the Board of Health for the County of Champaign paid, helped support this program, and they withdrew the support. They didn't have to withdraw the support, and I think we ought to ask them to put some money into it so they could do even more. I don't know exactly what the mechanism is for that, but I think we ought to support this program, making a request to Public Health for some support, because it's a totally appropriate, and for all the reasons that you noticed. And they, you know, so, it's just another one of those things where I think it's not, it's a mistake to assume that you can only do it if the Mental Health Board supports it. That's it, it's my, my comment about our county.
It's a great comment, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, next agency, Cunningham Children's Home, and it's a parenting model planning and implementation, and Kyle.
All right, this is Cunningham Children's Home Parenting Model Planning Implementation. It's my understanding that Cunningham Children's Home is essentially trying to fill the void that Parenting with Love and Limits created when the program ended. Looks like half of the year, they would be planning as far as what, researching what type of program would replace it, and starting in January, it would be implementation of the program, and if things worked out, next year would be a full program application. I mean, it seems like a good path to go down. I know that PLL served a really important service, purpose for our justice system, and as far as a referral source, as far as being a reliable and effective program. So it seems that, you know, researching what would fill that role best is a good path to go down. You know, one of the staff comments was, if PLL is chosen, would the board support restoring funding for the model, including the contract for licensing, supervision, and evaluation? That was a point of contention, I know, last year. This was a pretty hefty fee.
I'm next on it. I agree with Kyle on the, the fees for PLL. I'm hoping we can look into other alternatives. A couple of things, I, I'm glad we're going to do something to replace working with youth 10 to 17 and their parent and caregivers. A couple of questions I had if they would consider, one is that will this be available for families who are not in the juvenile justice system? And also, would, would they consider looking at online parent training programs? There's some research that has shown that they've discovered that brief online trainings is equally effective to in-person trainings in helping kids improve their behavior and parental knowledge. And I, I think it's something to look into, cost-saving for families and also for reaching people in our rural areas. Any other comments? Susan?
Again, I'm glad to see a proposal to fill the void, but it's an expensive proposal, and I'd like more details about the staffing, and if it's funded, definitely an interim report, because it's, it's very expensive. It's $280,000 to serve 13 children and families.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, next, we have Don Moyer's Boys and Girls Club, and the program is CU Change. And Elaine, please.
Yes, so this is a long-term program. They expect to engage the youth that, from, from grade six to 12, for 36 to 48 months. That's kind of, we see a lot of handle the crisis kinds of programs, but this one aims to follow these children to high school graduation and have them graduate with a plan for something to do after that. I went, I always go to the websites and look for our proposals, and the, the Don Moyer website doesn't have this program there per se, but it has its components. So I don't quite, you know, know, know what to make of that. And by components, I mean, they are, are teaching and measuring across what they call, I think it's life, life domains, 10 life domains, you know, health and wellness, character and leadership, so on, self-control, so on. And I was interested that, and they're, those are evidence-based programs which all have names, I don't, you know, so that, so that they have a clear profile, it's just not that we're going to talk about health and wellness today. This is a module kind of thing on that, as far as I can see. It, it looks very ambitious to me for, for kids who've been in school all day, you know, but some of the things that I liked were that some of the stressors that were mentioned were a little bit different, like identifying as LGBTQ, I haven't seen that in, in one of these kinds of applications, I think that's very good. And if siblings are pregnant or parenting, you know, those, so it was a little bit more nuanced about the stressors on, on the, the youth and their families. And I also liked the fact that there was a community service component, that they're not just learning at a location, but building that idea in of giving to your community. So I, I know in the past, we've felt some of the programs from Don Moyer were a little, were a little bit vague, but I liked a lot of the detail on this one. I still wasn't sure about the county-wide access. I know they have a whole list of working, written working agreements, which include Rantoul and the youth program in Mohammed. But the, the transportation issue, I would kind of like more detail on. I know you, they might go to the, to assess, you know, go to the location, and there is $5,000 for transportation mentioned, but I don't know if that's, you know, group activities kinds of things for, for the programs, or whether that also means helping people get to this. So that was, that was my main question, was, was how people get there if they are, you know, not, not in Champaign or Urbana, and, and if that's, what kind, if that is a focus or not.
Susan?
Okay, if you could just stop the ringer from interrupting, because I've got about two minutes, I think. This is an impressive program, it's currently serving 64 youth, although only 40 are targeted. I would like to know what percentage of the youth reside within the Champaign-Urbana city limits, so that we would have an idea of what percentage of the rural population is served. Programmed on Moyer's is located in Champaign-Urbana, so I would suspect that's where the majority of, of the youth come from. If, if they are serving rural youth, where are they being served, or how are they being I love the fact that they're engaging youth for three to four years, trying to get them through high school graduation, because they're starting in middle school with them. I would like to know how many youth are continuing from prior year, so if there could be some data on youth who continue to reside in the community, who continue to participate in the program. I know mobility can be an issue, if someone moves out of the community, they aren't going to be in the program, but if those remain in the community, what percentage continue from the prior year? And how many new youth are identified to replace those that have left? I think it's commendable that they have 18 interagency agreements in place, suggests that they're working hard with other programs. They mentioned that one of the Champaign-Urbana districts, I think it's Unit Four, has two partner programs, Operation Hope and CU Goal Getters. And I wondered, you know, how do those programs interface with the CU Change, and are there other similar programs in other districts, and are they being tapped? And I think my other, no, that, and that was, those, those were all of my questions. The funds requested or level requested, 72% of the budget comes from the Mental Health Board, and I'm glad it's not 100% of the budget, and would hope that there are efforts underway to expand other sources of funds as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next, the agency, it's Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club again, and it's Community Coalition Summer Initiatives. Susan?
This proposal, or this, this activity, we've seen presentations from Don Moyer's Boys and Girls Club about how expansive and wonderful the summer program is, and it's been very impressive. I was a bit disappointed in the application, in that I, I had a recall of the number of different groups or grassroots organizations that served as subcontractors, but none of them are listed in the proposal. And so that seems amiss, and I would like to know, even if it is early for programs to be applying to participate in the Community Summer Coalition or the, yeah, the Community Coalition Summer Initiative, who, who are likely to be participants in it? Don Moyer's establishes subcontracts with the grassroots, most of the money flows through to those grassroots organizations. Last year, they funded 14 subcontracts. They retain about 10% of the funds for administrative overhead, which seems very reasonable. Would be good to know, and they have provided information on the number of youth served, and if it's possible to identify unduplicated youth served, that would be very helpful. It would also be helpful to know how support from the Mental Health Board strengthens the local agencies, those who are the subcontractees, to support the summer initiative, because most of the grassroots organizations are getting fairly small amounts of money. I assume that it's not the only money that they have, in some cases it might be, but how, how does this money help those grassroots organizations leverage and provide the services better than they would be able to without, without those subcontract grants? And then it would be helpful to know the extent to which services may extend beyond Champaign-Urbana to rural areas, and the extent to which this funding helps to create stronger partnerships among local agencies that might leverage further funding in the future. So I think it's absolutely great that last year, there were 14 grassroots organizations that participated. I assume that there's something like that occurring again in the future. Any information, even if it's. Any information, even if it's descriptive and qualitative about how that strengthens the ability of local agencies to work together and collaborate, would be a wonderful outcome from this, in addition to the outcomes that we have for the many youth that are served.
Thank you, Susan. Any other comments?
Judy's the other.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy.
Susan spoke very well about this program. I remember when we first started funding it, it seemed like a good program. I -- the only thing I would add is that they have put in here that some subcontract may support Rantoul's summer programs. How good would that be to be more rural-based? We have to think about that all the time, and we don't. We support a lot of Champaign, Champaign-Urbana programs.
Thank you. Any other comments? Tom?
I have a comment that's not related directly to this. And it's the position that I think Don Moyer finds itself in. Don Moyer's programs come out of their building. And building is in Champaign. For them to be able to engage the rural area means that we need a space by the way -- because of the way they do their programming. And they're also, when Don Moyer does their program outside of their building, they're not just doing whatever program they're doing. They're also doing it -- they're also -- they're also addressing race relations because of who they are. And so it's a particular position for them to have to get out of that space, to go somewhere else, and we're asking them to do something in another space where I have no idea whether they're welcome in that space or not. But I think we need to be careful, and we need to be sensitive, to what that program is, and why it is, why it might be difficult for them to get outside of their building.
You know, I agree with you, Tom, but this is the summer program where they do send out to other organizations. So they are out of the building quite a bit for the summer. But we'll be talking about other Don Moyer programs as well, yeah.
And again, I'm not an expert on the program, but I know recently, they have started a program in Rantoul. I believe it's based out of Ada Junior High. I believe it started March 1st, and they were looking for, it was an application, someone to run the program during the rest of the school year. And then over the summer, they were looking for at least a director for 40 hours, and obviously, people to work under that. So they have something going on, so maybe that's something we need to question is, you know, for the outreach, what does the plan in Rantoul currently look like? And does that part of this proposal, or is it part of another Don Moyer proposal for the rural community?
And also, I know when Mohammed Area Youth Club was part of Don Moyer's, they did a number of activities together. And I think they've continued some of that. And they were quite successful.
That was what I was going to add, that Mohammed Club started out as an off-brand of Don Moyer's Boys and Girls Club. And I think it might end up being that Ada would become its own Boys and Girls Club. But I mean, having the Don Moyer's Club start out as a way to make that bridge possible.
Thank you. Okay, next, it's Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club. And the program is CU NC. And Judy?
Well, I happen to have the TRUSS application and this application. And when I read through them, it was hard to separate what was happening in each program. They're serving the same areas, Garden Hills, North End, University Bradley. And what their program is, is that they are to serve the people who are affected by gun violence. And when several of the board members spoke about TRUSS, they said, "That's what TRUSS does. It involves the family." So when I was reading these projects, this proposal, I couldn't separate how, if they are serving the same locations, how are they not crossing over to related families who are involved in this? And I just, it just questions in my mind, and I don't -- I don't know. I just think that we need to look at what we're funding. And personnel costs that we are paying is $80,972. So I don't know. I was glad that everyone spoke up about the TRUSS, but I think we have to look at why a program, instead of collaborating, can't combine, and that they would be a more effective program.
Next person in line here. And I'll -- of course, I mean, I'll put this out there. So the Champaign-Urbana Police Departments have separate law enforcement that take care of some of these things, but we don't seem to question the need for separate police departments. County, Parkland, University of Illinois, what other police departments do we have around here? We don't question those, the needs for those things, but let's not question the needs of creating a basket to hold all these different things. Pay me now, or pay me later. More services, hopefully. We get less children and families within the system, because we do pay more when they're in the system.
Comments?
I admit, I had also some sense of confusion. I think that the idea of the Champions is a great idea. The Champions provide wraparound care, I believe, to the families that are impacted by violence. I assume that they're very related to the Peace Seekers, that there must be interaction between the two. Just clarifying, how the two work together would be helpful. My main question was, it's listed as a new proposal, but it was previously funded through CUAP, which is what funds -- this is the agency that funds TRUSS. And now it's being moved to the Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club for funding. I don't want to get, you know, to be overly picky, but is there a rationale for the movement, given that the programs seem to be closely related? And for the increase in funding? Because it is, regardless of whether it's considered new or not new, it's a program we've had, and it's going up from $50,000 to $110,000. And I'd like more information about how the Champion teams, who support families, family victims of violence, relate to the Peace Seekers who interrupt the violence. I mean, I assume they're working together, so clarifying that they work together would be helpful. And then there's also trainings that are being proposed, intensive trainings of healing solutions, which are 40 hours, and then many intensive trainings, which are 20 hours. And it's not clear to me who the recipients of these trainings are. So are they the family members? Are they people who serve the family members, the Champions? It would just really be helpful to understand the interaction, the weaving of these two programs. And I've written my questions out, and I'll just, I'll hand them to the staff.
Any other comments?
I mean, just as someone who, at some point, was involved with the Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club, and involved in things like the Peace Keepers, sometimes our roles just meld into one. It's, I mean, going back to my basket analogy, it is trying to find the safest way to maintain peace within the larger community, as opposed to saying, "Who do you work for? And show me your badge before we talk about peace." And I never saw that much of a conflict when I read both proposals. I saw it as something that our community needs, and we need more of it.
I think it's important to ask these questions and discuss, because we're actually at a rough estimate here, is we're -- we have requests for $267,000 more dollars than what we -- that's in our budget. And so as we go through these, I think requesting or talking about how agencies work together for the same out -- for great outcomes is essential. Thank you. Next is Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club, and it is Youth and Family Services.
Yeah. The people who serve, the parents, caregivers, families. First, the families of caregivers, and second, the systems themselves. We're trying to find a way in which Don Moyer's Boys and Girls Club gives, provides education and peer support and technical assistance to people within the community that help create these peaceable communities. We talk about trauma-informed care quite a bit lately. And I think if we're looking at ways in which we inform our community about trauma, we have to involve each other. And peer support, peer intervention, peer training is just as effective. I mean, the whole AA model of peers helping one another is one of the ideals behind this, that you train a peer to train another peer to provide the support needed. They talk about it, types of support and presence of support, and different ways in which they're going to be measured in the proposal itself. And I don't have a lot of questions about it. I think there's the competency and linguistic approach. And they're looking at sometimes some of the refugee populations also. So it's not just, not just native-born citizens of the United States, but the new citizens and new immigrants also.
Thank you, Joe. Julian?
Okay. So a little bit of, I was holding from commenting on the other Don Moyer's programs, because I think it'll pertain to this one as well. My recollection is, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong about this, is that these are programs, the ones we've been talking about now, that came from our Access Initiative. And we made what was essentially an administrative decision to try to find a home for these programs. So in some ways, what you're getting here is Don Moyer, it's not -- some of the questions that are being asked are not exactly the best way to approach, I don't think, what Don Moyer is doing. That is, they have served as the administrative recipient of programs that were developed with our encouragement over some period of time. And then when, I don't want to recount old political decisions, but our county decided not to house them here. So they're housed there, and Don Moyer agreed to do that. So there's a context for seeing these different programs. Now, the one that I'm going to talk about now, the Youth and Family Services Program, is a little bit different than some of the others, because it's about, it's focused, and this was a part of the focus of the Access Initiative from the federal funding, that required the development of something for kids who were seriously, having serious mental health problems. So you'll notice, this says, "The youth are clinically diagnosed." I mean, that's not just a phrase. That means they're having serious mental health problems beyond the kind that you think, "Oh, this could get them into trouble," or "This could get them into jail." They're actually having real mental health problems. The other thing about this program, which I think is terrific, is that it's run by and organized by peers and family members. So that it's, these are people who've experienced similar kinds of difficulties, who've learned how to deal with them, and, you know, and these are difficult problems. I'm not, I mean, I think it would be a little absurd to think they're going to sort of solve all the problems. But it is very helpful to have families helping other families, and have that done in an organized fashion. And so this program, I see, is a bit unique in that, and it also comes from a part of the community that doesn't often get that kind of service. A lot of the kids are, or families, are asked to go to other agencies that don't come out of their community, that have maybe a different way of looking at the world. And in some ways, maybe not as, not intentionally, but perhaps just inadvertently, less accessible or sensible for those kids and families. So I think there's a lot to be said for us trying to support this kind of program. They're not asking for any increase. They essentially took what was going on and said, "Okay, you can house it here." So what, so I'm a little bit hesitant to critique the Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club for taking a program that was developed to help that community and allowing it to find a home. So that's my comment.
Any other comments?
Thanks for the history. I did not know that.
Next is Dream House, and the program is Dream. And I'll start, and then Elaine. It is, the approach is after-school, summer enrichment, physical health, and parent support for boys seven to 13. It's a prevention program. They are asking for a 0% increase. We, last year, they had $160,000. They are asking for the same amount. They've worked with U of I Val team on outcomes, and they do have an expansion location in Their resource leveraging is they are, they do coordinate with providers of several school districts. The only one absent was Urbana. And it's culturally responsive, strength-based program. And they look a lot at academics, and as we know, that's a ticket out. So positive, very positive thing. Elaine?
I've enjoyed watching this program articulate itself as it gets older. And the only question really, that I had one question, one comment, that special ed is mentioned for the first time. And I just wonder what that means in terms of scope of who they're serving. They do mention ADHD. I don't know if that's what they mean, but of course, special ed is a whole huge other ballgame. And I would just be interested to know what their plans would be, if there are plans for addressing the needs of special ed students, just what that means. And the other thing is just a comment, a lot of people, a lot of these applications don't say anything in additional comments. But Dream House, talk don't say anything in additional comments, but Dream House talks rather concretely about the near-future plans, you know, things that they haven't done yet, but that they're committed to doing. And I surely would like to see that for other programs to just make an effort to do that because a lot of our questions could be answered. You know, we're thinking, "Well, why aren't they doing this?" Or, "Are they ever thinking about doing that?" By one paragraph, even though I know agencies don't want to commit to things they don't have money for yet, but just some idea that, yes, we have thought of X and we are planning to do that next year would, would be a great addition to the applications that we read. So I was glad to see that in Dream House. They have some specific hires they want to do and there it is.
Thank you. Any other comments? Tom?
This is just a personal information that I know that Dream House is involved, where they involve these kids in the community in a variety of ways, not just, this is not like a service providing program, but they provide, they provide kids with opportunities to experience a lot of the resources that they, that they're going to need when they are moving into adulthood. And they're getting these kids ready to be that, to be prepared for that. And that's, I don't think that's an easy task to do. So in addition to what we know about them, they do all this other stuff as well.
I think when we talk about prevention, how key it is and it's, it's so key to give kids a plan for the future. And also, and I failed to mention this, is they use, uh, just huge numbers of volunteers in the community, which is, which is amazing. Thank you. Next is Mohammed Area Youth Club, Bulldogs Learning and Succeeding Together. And Judy, please.
It was fun to go to their meetings because they are all collaborating together to make this a positive thing for the community. They do have a new director now. I don't know who that is. Okay. Hi. Okay. Okay. They have a program called Blast, which serves the K through five. And, uh, then they go to Members Matter. And, uh, they use, uh, uh, their school district is a big supporter of them. They let them use their, uh, resources in the middle school, high school. They have a summer program. Their hours for involvement are very conducive to parents' working hours. I think they've gone above and beyond to make this community program, uh, really an important, uh, program. I, uh, their total program budget is one hundred, one-thousand-one-hundred-nineteen dollars and they're asking for eighteen thousand dollars. And hey, is that great because they're making a difference in a lot of kids' lives.
Joe?
I don't have much else to add to it.
Just have a, a small correction for the Bulldogs Learning and Succeeding Together. They're only asking for fifteen thousand. It's eighteen for the next one. Yeah. And the other thing is it is servicing outside of Champaign-Urbana, which we've been talking about the need for that. Any other comments? Thank you. Next is Mohammed Area Youth Club and this is MACI Members Matter. And Joe?
Wow, I did not even prepare for this one. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Julian.
So, and plus I appreciate Judy, uh, giving the, the budget numbers for this one.
Sorry, I was on the wrong page.
I was about to say what she said, which is, uh, their total budget is just under a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars and they're asking, and we give them eighteen. This is the same amount they have now. So this, this is an interesting program in that it's a bit different than the ones we've been talking about because it's in Mohammed, right? So, and it's basically an after-school program. Lots of after-school activities for lots of kids and justification is, it's just sensible justification for the kinds of things they do and the nature of the programs. And it's, it's actually, it's also worth noting that eighty-seven percent of the kids in it are white. However, seventy percent of them are on free or reduced lunch. So, you know, all white kids aren't rich, even if they live in Mohammed.
Stop yourself.
And they need this kind of, and they need this kind of programming after school is really an important part of, uh, kind of keeping kids healthy. There's a lot of evidence that this sort, this, I don't, I wish I had evidence about this program specifically, which maybe they're, they have. But these type of programs that get involved kids in after-school activities, and these run up to age seventeen, so we're talking about high school kids. They also do a summer program, I think. So getting kids involved in any kind of activity that's, that could be construed as constructive turns out to actually have a big impact on those kids later on. So I think for, I think we're getting a bargain on this one.
That's why I'm not, um, preparing for this. And I, I can go back to the history of this, starting with the Boys and Girls Club. And one of the young men that was one of the first young men involved in this program works at Napleton's. Every time I take my car in at Napleton's, I see him. And part of this, and they collaborated work with our Champaign County Operation Snowball. And they would have, they used to have a bus that would bring the kids from Mohammed to Champaign. And that was a part of the collaborative work that was done. And I, and I hope that there are other collaborative endeavors that are looked at with, um, this club and some of the organizations in Champaign-Urbana also. Because it, the more young men and women get to see one another as having similar needs and values, the better it would be for us when they start taking care of us when we're in wheelchairs.
I think it's important to note, obviously, I've been around a long time, but when I started in the Mohammed-Siemur School District, there was in ninety-two, the population is seven percent free and reduced lunch. And now the school population is twenty-five percent free and reduced lunch, which is different than what people's perception actually is.
Can I, I just want to add one thing that I should have said, but I, because I wrote myself a note about it. I wondered if they have any kids with disabilities in those programs. I don't think they report that. And there was some question about, you know, cultural competence and so on. And another way, I mean, a relevant question about cultural competence is, is this program available for kids who have some sort of either physical or emotional disabilities? I, I didn't see any information on that. It'd be nice to know.
I can actually answer that. It's a fully inclusive program. And so they even have, um, aids in their buildings that help with students that would need an aid during the after-school programming. The other thing is that, uh, MACI, the actual physical building, they house the eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program for the school district at no cost. So when the building is not being used during the day for MACI kids during the school year, the school district utilizes that for their, um, eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program.
Okay. Well, my suggestion would be that they say that stuff in this proposal.
I would agree. Thanks. Any other comments? Okay. Next is NAMI-Champaign County and the program is NAMI-Champaign Grant Application. And Julian?
Oh, that's me again. Where'd that go? There it is. Okay. So this is a new program for us, but it's not a new program in our community. They're asking for ten thousand dollars. They say they have in their budget, they're budgeting for fourteen, well, just under four, well, fourteen-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars. They're asking us for ten thousand dollars, mostly for personnel in order to pay, uh, a person at, at some rate of time to, you know, operate the office and make sure that the programs that are national programs that they're proposing to, to do, um, are done the way they should be done. So, um, this, this is a, a domain that NAMI is, probably most everybody knows. You know, this is a, a family organization. It's for, um, families of, uh, the target person has serious mental illness and families often have little or no support. So NAMI is essentially a peer, uh, support program in which they get all kinds of information and ideas, as well as emotional support and so on. And it's a very, um, useful for families who have, uh, family members like this. They, it doesn't matter how old the family member is. They can be a fully adult person, but still maintains a difficulty for the family. And so there's, the only thing controversial about NAMI is that sometimes the targeted patient doesn't like it. Sometimes the targeted patient wants to be away from their family and they wish their family would leave them alone. But sometimes that's not a good idea and sometimes it is. And sometimes families can help each other kind of figure that out. So, I, I mean, I think this program, although it's new to us, it has a track record of operating basically as a volunteer program. And it has a lot of national support to it. So they're not just making stuff up here. So I think that's all I have to say about it. It's a pretty low investment and I think it'd be interesting to be able to ask them, once they, once they're supported by us, then we can ask them questions about, well, what difference does this make to families? And they have some ideas about how to do that. I think there are, I think their way of evaluating it might get some assistance, but they're, they care about doing that. So that's, that's what I'd say.
Thank you. Tom?
Tom, is your microphone on?
You know what? If you sit over here, these don't work. It's how they operate in a rural areas. And I could, it, it seems to me like in, um, questions like, um, NAMI-Champaign County offers our signature programs or silence and friends and families can be offered. It doesn't sound like they have a real, um, plan or program of how to address the rural area. So one question I would have would be, would, would they think about, would they, if, if I'm right, would they think about, um, a, a, a more focused effort to reach the rural, rural areas? I had the same comment, similar, similar comment about how they're dealing with underserved and minorities. Could they have a meeting place that's a little more comfortable or welcoming to minorities? Other than that, I, I, as Judy, Julian said, this is a, a long-term organization that has really been committed to mental health in a variety of ways. I have no doubt that they know what they're doing.
Tom reminded me of my note to myself, which I forgot to say, that there is no information on the demographics that I saw. So it would be nice to know and it would answer some of the questions that Tom is raising.
demographic or residency information on new programs. So that's why it's missing, because we don't even ask.
Okay. Well, we could ask it.
Yes.
Next year.
I'll just pop in just a second. It did say, um, the two locations right now are Rosecrantz and Colony West Community Building is where they're meeting. And that could just come with, um, they don't have a free space to meet. We often, I've, just different organizations I've dealt with, sometimes they just don't have a free space. So maybe that is something that a rural community can offer.
Any other comments?
And, I mean, going back to Navi and the rural community, it's just more about hopefully the education part of it. Because we still know that there's a lot of stigma attached to mental illness in many of our rural communities.
Thank you. Next is Rosecrantz, Central Illinois, and the program is Prevention Services. Joe?
So prevention, um, I think, uh, from a personal point of view, I mean, substance, substance abuse or prevention is for all of us. When there is nobody that would be immune to the whole idea of substance abuse or prevention. This program targets, um, youth, um, fourth through ninth grades, but not limited to that age group, the parents and the community itself. So we're looking at, at much more of a holistic thing, looking at not just prevention for youth, but also looking at the family in which these kids come from and the communities in which these kids come from. And look, killing, bringing it out to concentric circles as it goes out from that particular child. Weekly services to be provided in the different, in different schools, um, the middle schools and the rural middle schools also. I think it's looking at collaboration to try to bring education, not just the physical, having the physical education built in there itself, but also having this information coming in from the outside. Because I think sometimes, um, young people may not just listen to their own school social workers or teachers, but would listen to an outsider because the outsider might be cooler or something. And also, I, one of the things I like about it, doesn't criminalize the whole idea of, um, drugs. Prevention is neutral. And when we look at things like addiction, it shouldn't be criminalized and it shouldn't be made to be somebody that's stigmatized. So those are things with the information, the collaborative effort with, with education and providers, you can probably get a clearer perspective on how to actually really prevent use and abuse.
Julian?
So they're asking for sixty thousand dollars of their three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar budget for this. And this is a, so this is prevention in that it's aimed at children and their families. It, um, I think it's about as well-organized as these kinds of programs are. It focuses on curricula to cover alcohol, tobacco and other drugs, skills for handling bullying, uh, attitudes and values and so on. So, and they refer to, um, existing programs that I believe they're using as models that come from SAMSA. So I, I have to put aside my general skepticism about the effectiveness of educational programs in preventing substance abuse, of which I have a considerable skepticism. But I think if there is one that's going to do it, well, this, this might. Because it looks like it's doing done the way it's supposed to be done and I hope it works. It'd be nice to see that it does.
I'm glad you're a skeptic, but I, but I, I think, um, prevention, do, programs could work because I think it's, it's about information. Yes, kids are going to experiment and I have no problem with the experimentation. If they go down the line where they become addicted to the substance, then that's a problem. Giving them the right information with the right, um, modality will help prevent long-term use and abuse.
Well, I endorse the concept.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Is this like a after-school program? I'm having a hard time understanding exactly what it is.
The timeframe? Can you talk about the timeframe, please?
It occurs within the school day, and-
Is this like there?
No.
No.
No, it is not like there.
Don't do that anymore.
The, the, it occurs during the school day, I would say, like during a health class, and the session will, they'll run like six, eight, 10-week sessions, depending on whether it's the Too Good for Drugs or Too Good for Violence curriculum that's being used. And it's typically in the middle schools, but will go higher or a little bit lower in terms of age, but it occurs during the school day, for the most part. They do do some activity in an after-school setting, if an after-school, if, for example, Macy's Blast Program asks them to come out and do something, they would do that, or at Urbana Neighborhood Connections, they would do that. So, and they do do a pre- and post-test, and they track it over the grades in which they, they are working primarily in middle schools. So they, they measure change actually from the beginning, pre-test, say for sixth grade, measure it at the end of sixth grade, at the end of the class, and then they will do a pre-test, and they track those results for that, that grade at that school, and they will compare it from, to basically measure retention from one year to the next, and they can show you the retention rates from where they started with a pre-test in sixth grade through, say, completion in eighth grade. No, these aren't, yeah, it's universal, yes.
And that's what I like about it, that it's not targeted at all, stigmatizing kids and saying, oh, you are that kid, so it's just open to everybody. Yeah, we will.
It's another study session, Julian. I think we're getting punchy. The next agency is the U.P. Center of Champagne County, and the program is Children, Youth, and Families Program. Kyle?
All right. The U.P. Center, we've funded them for some years now. This is a LGBTQ-focused organization. It's my understanding they're the only organization in town that has that specific focus. Looks like they do weekly support groups for youth, which involves case management, referrals, families' monthly support groups, involves case management, helping with topics like navigating healthcare settings, respecting youth's autonomy and gender and sexual identity, understanding the difference between gender identity and gender expressions, and coping with general young adult behavior. Yeah, they also have case management. I don't really have any, it's pretty, bit of an increase from last year.
It's actually a ninety-five percent increase. I think it's important to, to note that is, it is one of the few resources for LGBTQ, for youth and family members. My questions would be, would they consider, the weekly support group for kids is at the University YMCA, and I, I don't know how hard that is for kids to navigate around campus, I'm just thinking unless you were a campus kid. So that was my only concern, is, is it, have they considered any other locations? And that may go back to Jane's comment on, we go where we can go when it doesn't cost. I mean, that's the reality of this, of our field. But I do think it is important to note that they are serving a much-needed population, and it's very important. Any other comments?
Yeah, the weekly meetings location has changed over the, over the times it's been around. Yeah.
Tom?
I just have a comment about your observation of that it being held at the University Y. While it's an easy place for students to get to, it's not easy if you drive there, because there's absolutely nowhere to leave a car.
That was my concern, too. The other thing I was, obviously, my brain keeps going, I was thinking about if our agencies consider Ubering kids that don't have access, as, because I know sometimes we put bus tokens, but oftentimes, that's not possible in every area, and that's just a random thought.
With Jane's comment about places, it may be valuable for these agencies that don't have their own space to see what churches would be available to them, because that's not impossible for them to say, yes, we'd be happy to house you.
Usually, I mean, churches like the McKinley Foundation, and also the United Church of Christ usually provide spaces for organizations such as this to, to meet, and there are a couple of parking decks that are open in the evening when these organizations can meet also.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, next is Urbana Neighborhood Connections and the Community Studies Center, and Elaine?
They're asking for twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for especially their HOPE program, and this organization is next door to the group home where my son lives during the week, so last week I just knocked on the door and went over, and it was a no-school day, so it was very active, and I got to talk to people. Beth Hand, a retired school social worker who was volunteering, took me around. There's a, it's a lot bigger on the inside than it is on the outside. There are all kinds of rooms and a library, and when we talk about resource leveraging, she showed me the computers that the children were, were using, and, you know, they had come from the U of I when the U of I upgraded some computers. There were tables that had been scavenged from Carl when it is moving to Carl at the Fields, there were a couple of storage centers from a motel, and they had a new garage that they had attached on the back from somewhere. So the resource leveraging was just so creative and wonderful. But what I particularly liked about what this program does is bibliotherapy, and as a writer, to imagine, this is what the arts are about, this is what literature is about, children who can't perhaps directly confront what is going on in their lives that's troubling to them, they can sit and read a book, several of them reading the same book at once, and talk about the characters that are going through these same things. So it's a wonderful, wonderful idea to open up children and give them a way to discuss issues that they would like to distance themselves from, as far as admitting what they, what they are. So this program is, the HOPE empowerment program I mentioned, is helping other people evolve, and so through this bibliotherapy, they, they learn their own, to explore their own identities, issues of self-worth, and can, can construct a self-help plan. I liked, just by dropping in to see how, how the adults were interacting with the children, some of them were out on getting ice cream, because they, a group of them had gotten very good grades, and so they got a treat. And so there were all of these, and the way the children would run up and say, I spilled my popcorn, and there would be a little discussion about, well, some other people haven't gotten popcorn yet, so let's wait, you know, so everything is very welcoming and very kind of value-structured, and I see them all the time playing outside when I go to, to see my son next door, and so the program is, it's very lively and vital. And the only, the thing that was unfortunate about the application was that the cultural competency plan wasn't finished, just kind of, some of it isn't filled in, so I assume that will be corrected.
Susan?
This is part of the system of care that we funded for a number of years, similar to what's provided through Macy, similar to some of the programs at Don Moyers. It provides after-school and summer activities for children who live in the Urbana School District, and it does a fabulous job for very little money, and they rely heavily on volunteers, and they're very effective at doing that. So they're requesting a slight increase in funding, it's thirty-one percent, but they're functionally going from nineteen-five to twenty-five-five, which is a six thousand dollar increase, and a great bang for the buck.
Any other comments? I, I would just like to add that the comment that it serves as an empowerment zone is that Janice and her numerous volunteers have just done an outstanding job with this model program, and I feel, prevention-wise, we're just so lucky to have it in our community. So thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I knew Janice when she was a parent in the Urbana Schools, and she saw the need for so many children, and she just loved and embraced them, and she kept going, and what a role model.
I think you might have a fan club up here, but, next.
We can tell stories about Janice now?
Oh, there she is.
Next. Okay, we are doing great. We only have a few more grants to review here, three more. Family Service Center of Champagne County, the Senior Counseling and Advocacy, and Kyle?
All right. So this program is geared towards seniors, it's in the title, but they provide information and referrals, assistance with warm transfers to other providers, they also can do supportive counseling as well as advocacy and referral, and for the long-term clients, counseling, advocacy, referral, follow-up. Yeah, that's really all I got, a fourteen percent increase from last year.
Okay, so they served in two thousand and eighteen thirteen hundred and eighty-seven, and the cost, if you look at the relatively low cost, that's a hundred and two dollars per client, and the services, it's comprehensive services, they actually, they, in addition, they reach seniors in their home, and they cover rural areas. They also have family services, transportation services. They are one of our key programs that addresses seniors and mental health issues in our county, and it's essential that we know that, because it's, obviously, it's a growing population, and they're, they just provide a key service. They also have programs to help seniors with self-care, to manage chronic diseases. Their programs encourage active, they encourage seniors to have, encourage active rewarding lives. Their Pearls program is what it is. It's a fourteen percent increase, but if you think of how many people they serve and what they're doing in our community, that's a minimal increase. It's to a hundred and sixty-two thousand, three fifty. Any other comments?
I think any program that serves seniors ought to be automatically-
As I look at this board-
Don't even review it.
My comment is, this is one of those programs that's actually traditional, you know, this is what mental health, what people think about as mental health services. It's traditional counseling and social work, and all those things that are normal kinds of activities, that it's great that we have it in this community, and it's great that it's not the only thing we have in this community, so.
And I think of the essential component of working with the seniors and with family members, and how important that is in, in the home. Thank you. Okay, next is the Rape Advocacy Counseling and Education Services, and the program is Sexual Violence Prevention, and Kyle?
All right. This is Races. This is a program we funded for multiple years. This year's a pretty large increase, two hundred and seventy-six percent. They do education services in schools, as well as other public events, which holds a variety of services, but I think for our funding, it's more specifically to the education component. I mean, this is an organization we've seen almost come back from the death as far as what happened to them during the budget crisis, and so it's really refreshing to see such an increase in service from eighteen to nineteen. Seems like they're getting ramped up, so, pretty exciting.
I think it's important to note, they're the only agency that's providing sexual violence prevention in the county, and they do, they offer four sessions, which, which I think is essential when we think about education programs, that's not just a one-time, it's a follow-up afterwards when, when people have questions and stuff. So there's four sessions, and they, one of the main reasons for the increase is they were not able to serve all of the requests that they had, and they also, or as far as resource leveraging, they utilize a number of agencies. Those were my comments. Any other comments? Okay, and the next one is U.P.C., Land of Lincoln, and the program is vocational training and support, and it's, the target population's Champagne County residents with a mental health disability ages eighteen to fifty-five, who may have substance abuse disorders and require extended support services or vocational training to maintain successful employment, become job-ready, and financially stable. The, they're asking for a hundred and forty-three percent increase. Their current funding's forty-three thousand, two thirty-eight, and they want a hundred and five thousand. There were a couple things that, and I know, I mean, I'm looking at this point, this is a very difficult population when we're, we're looking and trying to help them find employment. It's a very tough thing. There were a couple questions that I had about audits and compliances, and the other thing is I would like to see, there's a number of things on the trainings, I would like to see more outcome data, it's kind of a common theme, right, Julian, on this? Okay, Elaine?
Well, I have several questions, not so much programmatic, there's no question that this is needed, but perhaps bureaucratic. This agency missed the deadline for the two thousand and eighteen audit, they missed the extended deadline, emails were not answered, email queries about that, and finally, we had to withhold two months of payments before we got the information we needed, and I think that's unacceptable. Another thing that I'm concerned about is that no working, written working agreements are listed, so I don't know if those exist. The board is all in Springfield, and so there's nobody on that board which serves this area, so that makes me wonder about our, you know, if our particular situation is, is going to be heard. Then it was unclear to me whether, about the question of underserved and underrepresented groups, they say, well, they're all, and it's true, people with mental illness are that, but within that population, what about the minorities within that population? There's nothing about that, for example. So I didn't think that was clear. I thought the cultural and the CLC plan was under-described, perhaps underdeveloped at the agency level, and I was concerned about, they gave us a goal for 100% to be employed and happy. Well, yes, that's the goal of every agency, for everybody to be happy and everybody to be served. So to me, that's a non-goal, and it occurred to me that one way you make that goal happen is you call out the people who are going to keep you from meeting that goal, and I sadly have anecdotal personal evidence in that direction. So I'm concerned about 143% increase, you know, of that, given what I consider to be a little bit looseness bureaucratically, and I guess I better stop.
Other comments, Julian?
Is there a justification given for the increased funding request? It must be based on some. So what do we know about, do we know about, it sounds like we're not so sure about whether they've already used, done what they were already supposed to be doing. So how would they be expanding before they're meeting the current year's goal is a little bit, I guess, you know, I don't know enough, I don't think I have a close-up enough understanding of it, but this is, was last year their first year on this program? That's what I thought, and my recollection is that our staff thought that they had a pretty good record of doing things like this, and that maybe they'd be able to do this program. Is that, am I misremembering?
This was, there was a program like this funded by the DEDE Board to serve people with DEDE, and they kept getting referrals of people who had other, you know, serious issues, and a lot of them had mental health issues. So the idea was, okay, the services seem to work for those people because they were serving them, even though they had no money to do it. So this was a risk to see, you know, could they do this? And it looks like they had more demand than they expected, but you're right, we don't know how they're performing right now because we don't have the audit.
They served 16 people last year, 16 clients. Any other comments? Tom?
So I appreciate, that's okay, no, he let me go first. I appreciate, Elaine, you being honest and passionate. I respect that, because I just learned a lot about this agency that I didn't know as someone new sitting here. And, you know, I guess, too, you know, if they're new to us, it almost reminds me, like, when my kids ask for money, then you better do X, Y, and Z to get, and for me to hear that they weren't turning in paperwork and responding to that, I'm kind of like, it's kind of disrespectful, maybe. So that was my two cents.
I just think with regards to Elaine's observations, and I don't want to prolong this, and I don't want, I don't want the staff to have to say anything about it right now, but I know in the past, when we've had this situation, Mark and Lynn have handled it well, and my thought is, I don't want to hear it today, but at some point, I'd rather hear from Mark and Lynn about where they want, where they want to go with this, because I think that those are pretty serious shortcomings, and we don't want to be in this position next year and have the same kind of thing happen. But I know how these guys handle this, so.
Any other comments? Thank you. So we have two other draft grants that are included in your packet. The one is Champaign County Head Start, Early Head Start, and its Social Emotional Development Services. And the other one is Family Development, and I want to know if anyone has any comments or questions on these. Susan?
I know that the Mental Health Board typically funds about $655,000 of services related to developmental disabilities or at-risk for developmental disabilities, and these two programs would represent that funding level. Both of the programs have been funded in the past. The Champaign, Champaign County Head Start, Early Head Start, is basically the semi-emotional support program that's provided for the older children, older being three to five. This is for the youngest infants and toddlers. And so, you know, we've agreed that it's an important focus to ensure that young children have access to mental health resources and support for emotional, social regulation. And my only question would be, I assume that the increase of 52% must relate to the demand for the increase, but that it's very consistent with what we have funded before for the DEDE Board. And we have almost always funded the DSC Family Support Program as part of that contractual arrangement that we have, and it has a very long history of funding, and I don't have any questions about it, but I just wanted to comment.
I'd like to make a comment, too, on the DSC, the Family Development, how this is an essential service for families, and it's essential when, when we can provide, the earlier we provide services, the more effective, the more effective they are. And I just think, I just think it's essential services. Comments?
Can you tell me, are we within the amount of money that we allocate for those kinds of services? Or, I'm a little, I always get confused about exactly what our arrangement is.
So the amount that you have available for DEDE programs is actually determined? Like, it is based on, the language in the intergovernmental agreement is very specific, it equates to the current year's levy increase over last year. So that was 4.5% over last year. So that takes you, we take, we put the CILA amount in, and then we take it back out so that you get the full advantage.
So this is within that.
$667,750 is the amount that you have to spend on DEDE, and these total a little bit more than that. These, both of these programs were reviewed this morning by the Developmental Disabilities Board. There are some questions that they will be asking, you know, similar to this one. If they think these programs should be funded at the full request amount, they can kick in for the difference. They will, they will be able to afford that.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on. Do we have any board announcements? Does anyone, I don't know if I should ask this at the end of this meeting, does anyone want to meet next week to further discuss the grant process? I take that as a pass. I want to thank everyone again, because this is tough, and thanks to the staff for all of their reviews and going through this. Board announcements? Any other board announcements? Study session, May 15.
We'll prepare a briefing memo that looks like the decision memo, so that you'll have that, probably May 8. That's our goal, to discuss on May 15. And we hope to give you enough material to feel really comfortable with decisions to make on May 22. That's your regular board meeting. We do have some other action items for you on May 22, so we'll want to make the most of the 15th.
I just have a question, and that is, last year, we submitted questions to the agencies, and they responded. Will we see their responses before the May 15 meeting, or is it at the May 15 meeting?
We're asking for those responses to be back May 1, so that we can email the responses out to you. They will also be in the May 15 board packet, but I think the sooner you see them, the better, because then you can react to them, to us, and then we can make sure that we're taking all that into consideration in that set of recommendations.
And I would encourage, if you, I mean, since this is kind of overload, if we think about things, go ahead and email the staff if you have additional questions or concerns. I think this meeting's over, and we're going to adjourn. I guess I don't need an emotion for that. Thank you, everyone.